All right, we are at seven o'clock.
Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Douglas School Committee meeting for Wednesday, January 20th, 2021. And I'm going to call the meeting to order right at seven and do a quick roll call vote of the school committee members. I think I saw you, Heather.
Heather Moore in here.
Julie Mulder here. Sorry about the dog.
Becky Charnyack here.
Kelly's saying it's not letting her in. So with that, we'll continue. We're going to skip over the Pledge of Allegiance, and we do have our student representative here who has great news. So leave it to you, Will.
I guess I'll start with that. So over winter break on the 23rd, I got a nice call, a nice little early Christmas present, and I got accepted into the Naval Academy. So some pretty exciting news over break.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Do you want to talk a little bit about the process to get accepted to the Naval Academy and what that looks like?
Yeah, of course.
And how long it took?
It was a very long process. I started in the summer, and essentially, there's like a few essays you have to write, like why you want to go, of course. Yeah, like it's some simple essays, why you want to go, like an event in your life that changed or developed your character. On top of that, there's the CFA, which is a physical exam, so testing your strength, essentially. So that was a test I had to do. That's like includes push-ups, pull-ups, running, that sort of thing. You have to get a lot of recommendations and letters. So like, I had to get some teachers involved for recommendations and writing, basically write-ups on me. There's also, I have to get a nomination, and that was with, I ended up getting mine from Congressman McGovern. So I had to do a few interviews with some of his members, same with Senator Markey and Warren. And so I did an interview with them. What else is there? It was a very long process. All this took place over a couple of months. On top of that, I had a blue and gold officer interview, and that's just another interview where an officer came to my house and met my family. Basically, we were-
You just went mute.
Sorry about that.
Yeah.
But he would basically, he met my family and just asked why I wanted to go, made sure all the reasons I wanted to go were for the right ones. Then, another very long process is the medical process, and that was, that consists of like 300 questions of just medical background, and then I had to go in for a medical exam for like a physical, pretty in-depth, and then also an eye exam. And so after all that, basically, as long as you pass medically, get a nomination, and get accepted by admissions, then you're in. So finally, all that's over, and I made it through, so.
Awesome job.
Thank you.
Yet a couple of comments in the chat box. Mrs. Sokol and Mr. Redden both said, "Congratulations, great job." So I feel there'll be a lot of that you'll be hearing over the next couple of months.
Yeah, it was super exciting, so thank you.
Absolutely.
Well, in the school right now, does anybody have any questions?
Hey, Will.
Yeah.
Congratulations. It's Julie, Ethan's mom. Will represents what the class of 2021 represents. He is just such a fine caliber student, and so isn't the whole class of 2021. And they're really missing out on their, on their year, but man, they're hanging in there. And, you know, Will's such a great example of, of what this class represents. They're just awesome kids. So Will, they don't even know like about your background with gymnastics and all that, but I'm sure they'd be floored, no pun intended, to know about that, too.
That did play a big role-
Congrats, you're awesome.
Yeah, that did play a big role in my admissions as well, because I got recruited, and that's how I got my letter of assurance. So that played a very large role that helped push me through admissions. So thank you.
I want to offer my congratulations, too. For people who don't know, might be watching, Will was helpful on the Superintendent Search Committee. I was impressed from the beginning. I'm looking at your Navy banner, but also how nicely your bed is made. And I mean, we're halfway there. Your mom and dad must be so proud. Truly, I, you know, like, I've got little ones still, but I look forward to them, you know, being something like you someday. I'm really, I'm really proud that you represent Douglas so well. So congratulations.
Thank you.
I didn't even notice the bed made.
All right, so moving on to some events in the school right now. The boys and girls' basketball season is like in full swing right now, and I'm sure most of you know, nobody can actually attend the games, but they're being broadcasted on YouTube on the same channel that this is on. So everyone can watch the home games there, and I think you have to pay, but you can still watch away game.
It's free.
Go ahead. Sorry. Oh, I thought you said something. Sorry. DECA is gathering to watch the state DECA award ceremony this week, and basically, students can attend competitions with other schools relating to like financial marketing business. And our chapter of DECA began last year at the high school, and they've already qualified for national competitions, so it's pretty exciting. There's an online cybersecurity class that's starting. Three students at the high school are currently enrolled, and I think that'll be starting around February. Later in the year, a new welding course is also going to be offered, and so that's with a few other schools to offer some new programs. Mr. GNA is getting ready, getting students ready for the, here we go, MACWIC exam in another month or so, and that's essentially a manufacturing certification that students will take. And they pass a series of tests on like measurements, safety protocol, and materials and tools used in manufacturing. So it's a pretty big deal for his entire class. And finally, it's not the year we all wanted, but luckily, it sounds like plans with Winter Carnival are still going through, and they'll be pushed back a little bit. So hopefully, we'll get some Winter Carnival action around March, where the weather's a little better, and we can have some of the events outside. So.
Thank you, Will.
Great. Thank you, Will, and congratulations.
Thank you so much.
You could do it.
Thank you, Will.
Okay, if anybody has anything not COVID-related, that's a public comment or communication, they could write it in the chat, raise your hand, or just speak out, because there's not a whole bunch of people here. Seeing none. If anybody has any old business. Does anybody have any new business? Seeing none, we'll move on to Dr. Vera's report.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to touch a little bit on a couple of updates with COVID. Our nurses have been working really hard. They finalized a couple of things on our professional development day, the 15th, which, which was on Friday. The first is the binex testing. We're going to be able to, and it'll be up and running, test any symptomatic person in school. So if a child is symptomatic in school, if an adult is symptomatic in school, they can come down to the nurse's office and be tested. If you're sick, please don't come to school and be tested. This is just if you're in school and you become symptomatic while you're in school, for us to be able to test students and adults. We've received permission slips, so that is up and running. On February 3rd, through a grant we've received, we're going to be able to test all faculty members, all 250-plus faculty members that want to be tested on Wednesday, February 3rd. That was finalized this week. We have a final kickoff or launch meeting tomorrow at, I believe, 9:30, and we'll be able to offer testing to all staff members, custodians, teachers, administrative assistants, paraprofessionals on February 3rd. It's a one-time grant, so it can only happen on the 3rd, but we're happy to be able to extend that to our staff. The Department of Education has started a state pool testing. They want to be able to offer schools, the governor announced this a few weeks ago, they want to be able to do pool testing in schools. We've had one webinar on it. Kathy Campbell, our lead nurse, went to it. There's another one, I believe, in another couple of days for us to look at. We're still looking at how viable of an option this is for the Douglas Public Schools in our community. In theory, in, in looking at it, it sounds great to be able to randomly test and test people every single week, but there's a lot that goes into it. What the pool testing, from my understanding, the way it would work is like this. Kids would be put, and adults would be put in groups of 50 in a pool. 10 random people would be picked from that pool and tested. If one person in that pool tests positive, then all 50 people in the pool would need to be tested, and that would be done during school time. We would need permission slips from parents to do it, and it is a nasal swab, which is a little bit more invasive than a spit test. In order for this to be effective, we'd have to do it twice, both for Cohort A and for Cohort B. So there's a significant time that goes into it. The state is giving this to schools for free who apply for the first six weeks. Then after that, there is a cost associated with it. I believe they're going to talk about the cost at this next upcoming meeting. So we're investigating that. There was some information that went out from the governor's office and from DESI. We're looking to see how viable of an option and how realistic it is for the school to pull off. I had a great meeting yesterday with two members of the Board of Health and some community members. They came and they toured both the elementary school and the high school. One of the things they're looking at is having for stage three for the entire community to use either the elementary school or the high school as a vaccination site for COVID. So we started those discussions yesterday. They toured the facility. They have a plan for where people will come in, where people will go out, where we would store the vaccines. So yesterday was the first step in the process, and that'd be great if we could be able to offer that on our campus for the entire community for phase three. I was hoping it would be for phase two for our staff, but they said the amount of work that it takes to get that up and running won't be ready in the next couple of weeks for, for that phase. Next, I sent out an email and a phone call earlier today about us having to extend the closing for the middle school for two additional days. We received word late this afternoon that some staff members that we thought were going to be released from quarantine today need to extend their quarantine. That leaves us very short-staffed at the middle school, and I didn't want to put the staff and the kids in harm's way, so we extended that closure for an additional two days. That will allow those staff members and a few other staff members to be released, and we should be back at full strength or close to full strength on Monday. So I apologize for the late notice, but we received that information late morning, early afternoon, that three staff members needed some extended time. Also, Mr. Ramato gave me a call right around dinnertime that a member of our junior varsity basketball team has tested positive. He was a close contact. Parents went and got the individual tested, and we now have our JV team in quarantine. I believe the nurse is in the process of reaching out to everyone, correct, Mr. Ramato? So the JV team is aware of that. I'll be sending out another letter today after this meeting. I've been nervous the past three days. I've been sending out, this is I think the first time I've gone three days in a row with, with sending out a letter. So I asked the principals just to send me an update as to how many positive cases we have in each of the buildings and compared that to last week. So the primary school currently has two active cases, which is up two cases from last week. The elementary school is at, my understanding, one active case. That's down one case from last week. The middle school is, has two active cases of people who are positive. That's down one case from last week. And the high school's at two cases. That is up one case from, from last week. So although we've sent, I've sent a lot of letters out for three days, our numbers are pretty consistent where, where they've been for positive cases over the past two to three weeks. So I just wanted to offer that last piece of COVID update to everyone. That's it for my COVID update. Be more than happy to entertain questions before we move on to other parts of my report.
I have a question.
Sure.
I'm just curious, based on the, based on the number of cases that you're seeing and the locations, if you've been able to make any connections, if there's any like transmission happening at the schools, whether it's between students or teachers or-
The transmission that we have is all coming, going back to the home. It's all based out of the home.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm just, for some good news, I'm actually running a clinic next week in Northbridge, so I'm back, I'm part of a clinic that's running about, I'd say about 60 people or so. We're vaccinating, so, you know, right here in Northbridge. So, actually, you were just there, Mr. Vera, where I was doing-
I was, I was. That facility was fantastic. Other questions?
Mr. Wagenheim.
There you go. Your head's up. Mr. Wagenheim, how are you?
Doing good. How you doing?
Good.
First off, I just, just like last time, I want to say, you know, great job to Will. Congrats and everything. Always nice hearing the students when they speak. I am speaking tonight, though, to reiterate the DTA stance. Days after I spoke a couple of weeks ago, the country continued to break records for COVID-related deaths. Massachusetts shattered records for positive cases. Douglas numbers started trending back up. We have had multiple school closures in the past couple of weeks. These constant changes in the school model are detrimental. This was one of our worries all summer, yet we continue to put people in the buildings for seven hours per day. Each day, I look at 30-plus students sitting in the cafeteria with no masks. I choose to wait outside of the cafeteria with my mask on. To think there is no spread occurring would be foolish. Yet conversations about the spread between the school and the community continue to be minimal. We have chosen a path of gambling with people's health and lives. One fatality or one lifelong health impact that could have been avoided is one too many. The list of students in quarantine is significant, and it has been for quite some time. Many of the high school students that are in quarantine are having trouble keeping up with the curriculum. If we were remote, most of these students would be well enough to attend remote classes and be able to keep up. This is creating a population of students who are falling behind, who otherwise might have been excelling. In addition, at one point, we had buildings without nurses in them during a pandemic. It is an unsafe environment, and now there is a new, more contagious strain of the disease to exasperate the problem. While all this is happening, teachers are still waiting for their vaccinations. Last time I spoke, there was a response about someone else having to still go to work. That was never our point. We are part of a society, and everyone has a responsibility to do their part to minimize the spread of this disease. Any jobs that can be done remotely should. We understand not all jobs can be done remotely. Education can. It's not nearly as good as the real thing, but neither is hybrid. If we're not prioritizing the health of our society, then what are our priorities? Gaps in learning does not equal loss of life. If we are truly looking out for our children, then driving down COVID rates is the best long-term plan. Five years from now, 10 years from now, when we know more about this disease and we look back on how we handled it, we are going to see a lot of mistakes. I don't want to fall in the group that was complicit. I want it known that myself and the majority of the union are against the decisions that have been made, and we do not and have not supported the plan throughout the year. I appreciate the opportunity to speak again tonight.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? And I don't know if, I don't know who's going to know the answer, but how many people do we have in quarantine?
Sure. So I can share what we had as of last week. On every Friday in the dashboard, I have the principals updated. That's something I added right before the holidays. So let me switch over to that. So at the, last week, at the primary school, we had seven people in quarantine, which was down four from the week before. At the elementary school, we had 11, which was up three from the week before. At the middle school, we had 16, which was up seven from the week before. And at the high school, we had 14, which was down seven from the previous week.
But at least at the high school, if we're adding the JV basketball team, so that'll probably be up this week.
That could either be up or down, depending how many of those 16 from last week went off of quarantine this week. So I have the principals, I have the principals updated the end of the day Thursday. So when I send out my Friday newsletter, the information's up to date as of late Thursday, as of Thursday night. So out of the 14 people who are in quarantine this week, that might reduce back to five, and then we could add another 12 for JV basketball.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments?
I'm sorry, when did you say that pooling was going to start taking effect? I know that that's the governor's, is trying to get kids back to school, and that's part of their strategy.
Correct. So we have a, I believe, I'll have to check my calendar. See, the tomorrow or Friday, we have a follow-up meeting with the Department of Education to look at next steps. The initial meeting was last week, and they just basically went over what pooling looked like, what it would look like in schools, what it entailed, the theory behind it. And then this week's, let me see if I could pull up the email. Mrs. Mulder, ah. Give me a second to look at it. So this week, the webinar is going to look at expected costs for each vendor, protocols, and considerations for pool testing, and next steps to begin the implementation. So that is on Friday of this week, that webinar. So we'll get some additional information on the next implementation steps.
Anyone else?
I'd just like to, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, Mrs. Grady.
I just wanted to thank Mr. Wagenheim for making his statement and assure him that he has been heard, and the, and the concerns of the DTA are heard by members of the committee.
Thank you.
Mr. Payne said, "Do you have a threshold of quarantine for when you'll close the schools for a longer period?" I think that will depend on where the quarantine is. Is the quarantine students or is the quarantine adults? Obviously, if we have too many adults who are quarantined, then we'll need to close the schools. So we saw that example happen this week at the, at the middle school. In terms of students, I think it would depend on where the kids are, what grades they are. If we have, for instance, at the high school, if we had something that wiped out our entire junior and senior class, then, you know, we would have to look at that. If it's just four or five kids per class, that would be something different. I think we would also have to look at and discussion of the nurses as to when the information comes to us. Our nurses, we can handle doing our contact tracing for X number of kids a day. If we got to the point where we found out there was an event that happened over a weekend, and we had to do close contact tracing for 15, 20 people, and we had to make hundreds of phone calls, that would be something we would have to potentially close down in order for us to effectively do our contact tracing for that large quantity of people. So there isn't a blanket number at this time.
Hey, um, oh, sorry.
Mr. Wagenheim, I don't know if you broke down, I think last week during our meeting, you mentioned that in the survey, the DTA was in favor, 75% survey response, something like that. Is there a breakdown, or was it broken down by building, by level? Because also, from my understanding, by measure, too, the younger kids are having a hard time with this. And so I'm wondering, yeah, if the breakdown in teacher-
Okay. No, it's a great question. We were just trying to get an overall picture before the last school committee meeting, so I don't have that data specifically.
Okay. Well, maybe that should be part of the conversation, too.
Sure.
Put it out there.
Yeah, thank you.
I don't know if we're able to release this information, but do we have a lot of people in the school system that are in a high-risk group, like over, you know, 60 years old or so, that would be eligible to get vaccinated ahead of others? I don't know if that's a question that can be answered, but-
I don't have that information with me. As to age groups of people in, in the school.
I'm curious. I had a quick question. I'm curious if you're able to share like the number. I know each week you share kind of how many cases we have each week, but I'm curious if you have numbers as far as like how many student cases and teacher cases we've had sort of since the beginning, I guess, since September. Is that data available?
I would have to go back and check with the nurse and see if they could pull that data together for how many student cases and how many, and how many adult cases we have within the building, and same thing for quarantine. It would take us a little bit of time to go back and then to dig through their files to get that.
Yeah, I'd just be curious to see the numbers, to see like what percent of our population has, has been affected at this point.
So I, I know, I'll speak. Thank you, Mr. Wagenheim, for coming again, you know, being part of negotiations with the DTA has been very fruitful for on both sides. We do hear you. I hear the concerns. I'm concerned too, as well as where the numbers are going to go, the trend, you know, but I think it's just a case by case. We have to take the population in each one of the schools and make sure where we are. So there's no easy answer on either side, but we do hear you, we do appreciate, and I'm, I'm concerned too, as well, as, as the community is as well, too, is where, where is that line? And, you know, we have, you know, data points and everything else of where we do that, but I look to Dr. Vera to make that determination for all of us. So, but I do recognize and I do understand the concern of the DTA as well as the admin. So, thank you.
Anyone else?
I don't see any hands up, nor, nor do I see anything in the chat.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, state of the schools. We're going to have each of the principals and Ms. Erkhart, hopefully our middle school principal will be on board by then, to present a state of the schools. That'll be the, the 8th, 9th, 10th, and 11th of February. And again, as I said in our last meeting, just a brief overview of what we've done for the first half of the year and where we're going for the second half of the year. So be on the lookout for that. I know principals have included in their newsletters, but again, that communication with the community as to what's going on in the schools is, is important. Job descriptions, Ms. Keegan and I have picked up that, that task. Mr. Means, last year, is one of the things he was working on, started writing and creating job descriptions for everyone across the district, from superintendent to custodians to administrative assistants to paraprofessionals. And right now, Ms. Keegan and I are in the process of going through that, making some tweaks to it, adjusting it, and then, once we finish, we need to share that with the DTA for them to look at, and then finally come to the school committee for approval. The past few weeks, I think Ms. Keegan and I can both agree, it's been a labor of love looking at those, those documents, and it's really important for us to have them and for people to have them as a reference guide as to what the qualifications are when we're asking people to apply for jobs, what the expectations are when people are applying for jobs, who supervises who, and what the work experience is, what the work environment is. It has a whole host of things that's really important for us to have, to be clear for when we hire people. So hopefully, I can have that wrapped up in the next few months. There's a lot of editing, a lot of going through, a lot of formatting, but I want to say that we've picked that back up. I know Mr. Means mentioned it last year, but we're continuing with that this year. Any questions on job descriptions? It's a fun topic, so I can bet we'll be flooded with them. It's a fun topic, so I can bet we'll be flooded with them. We're approaching the mid-cycle of the year, and at the beginning of the year, I shared my goals with the committee, and I just want to give people a mid-cycle review of them and the progress that I've made and we've made as a team, working towards those goals. First goal was a blueprint for a continuous student improvement, a strategic plan. We had our first meeting yesterday, there was about fifteen of us. We had students, we had parents, we had teachers, we had our leadership team there, and it was a great hour that we spent kicking off. Hope to have this completed by the end of the year to present to the committee. Our second goal is around developing an action plan for grades K to five for literacy. We have a literacy program, but we need a comprehensive literacy plan. That plan needs to include things such as reading, writing, phonics, encoding, decoding, benchmark assessments. There's so much that goes into reading, and we need to have a plan going forward. We need to be able to look at how we're going to be able to put more books in the hands of kids. We all know, we've all experienced it. You give a kid a book, if they love it, they're gonna read it. If they don't, it becomes problematic. How can we get more hands, more engaging books in the hands of kids? That's all part of that literacy work, and that started last week as well. I have an instructional leadership goal to continue to ensure instructional practices reflect high expectations. I wanted to have this in there in this COVID year to make sure we continue with the conversation about teaching and learning, because we need to think more than just COVID. We meet as a literacy, as a leadership team regularly and talk about teaching and learning. If you look at a lot of the goals within here, they focus on teaching and learning from the literacy action plan to a middle school schedule to a review of the program of studies. Ms. Erkhart and her team and teachers have done a great job bringing back cohort C students, making sure those kids are in school four days a week. And we've also started the process, although it's installed, but started the process about what's going to happen once we see people vaccinated, and once we see numbers continue to decline as they have in the past couple of days, to bring back more kids. Our middle school is looking at potentially, it was supposed to start this month. We've had a pause on that, on looking at a middle school schedule to maximize our staff and also to increase educational opportunities for our kids. We had a goal of family and community engagement, and, you know, we've been working really hard to keep the community informed and engaged, from our newsletters to Facebook pages to the Twitter page. Principals have done a great job tweeting and sending out weekly newsletters. We've encouraged staff members to join Twitter to share out the good things that are happening in the schools. We've zoomed, then we've re-zoomed, and we've more zoomed, and we've continued to zoom with people to keep everyone informed. And we have our state of the schools coming up. Our last goal is looking at the program of studies. Mr. Romano and I have been geeking out a little bit when it comes to the program of studies and looking at some of the offerings and exciting opportunities available to our kids for next year. Starting off with a seal of illiteracy, and we talked about that earlier, and that's making sure that kids who show proficiency in two languages will receive a seal in their report card, which is awesome. We're looking at adding more pathways and beefing up the content of our pathways going into next year. And this is some pretty cool stuff that Josh started the past few years, you know, with the assistance of Mr. Means, and we're gonna continue building upon that to create those pathways for kids. Josh, in thirty seconds, quick overview of a pathway. So people understand what we're talking about.
Yeah, it's a roadmap for students that have a particular interest or a particular goal in mind. It gives them courses that they should take, or options for courses that they should take, kind of guides them on other experiences that they could have, like clubs that they're involved in, or their senior capstone, or internship, and other things like that. So it's kind of like a minor, a major, like you'd get in college, but it's at high school instead. And so we put that on the student's transcript and diploma. And right now, we have three, one is STEM, one is business, and the third is global competency, which is kind of done to promote foreign language and humanities. And we're looking to add criminal justice and history for next year.
So some really, really good, good stuff. And then, obviously, in order to do that, increasing some and adding some different courses in our program of studies for next year, to make sure that kids have enough classes to take within those pathways. That's my update on goals. Any questions on that? All right. Additional.
Wait, I have a question, I have a question. I'm sorry, so going back to, like, I like this part. I'm glad that we're talking about this, because I feel like this is always the part that we don't, we haven't been talking about, was what are we doing with the kids' education? Homerooms, like, how does that work in middle school? I'm just curious, because I'm listening to my son tell me about how his homeroom works, and basically, it's like they play CNN, they ask them, "How you feeling?" kind of thing. And he's like, "Why can't we go back to the old days with what we did?" What, I don't know what the old days are, and I don't know, I mean, we don't have Mr. Delaney, but I'm just curious to see what did they used to do that worked? Because I'm trying to see, like, how can these kids, like, get that, that community feeling that I feel like is just so lacking right now? And maybe that's what we need to do, is get them back to the old days.
So I don't know what homeroom looked like pre-COVID. I don't know if there's anyone here who can speak to homeroom in the middle school pre-COVID. Mrs. Hayes, how are you? You're muted. You're still muted. All right, oh, back.
Okay. Come on, we want to hear you. Oh, there you go.
I was hoping I was gonna stay muted today with my. Pre-COVID, we had a ten-minute homeroom in the middle school. We didn't have homeroom like we do now. The reason, I believe, I wasn't part of making the schedule, admin made the schedule, but they added in the SCL time so that we could check in with the kids with closed gap and do activities with them and get to know them. So we've been, and then after, we had kind of talked with the kids, and a lot of them really enjoy CNN, and it kind of ties in with the current events. So we've been having them do that in the morning, and then we, you know, this week, we did a Martin Luther King activity with them. We did a vision board at the beginning of the year to try to get them to think ahead to their, and this is just eighth grade, this isn't the other grades. So basically, it's, it is trying to, like, talk to the kids, icebreakers, and that kind of stuff at the middle school right now. So I know the hard part is they're not up and moving. You know, they're not going from homeroom out in the hall to seeing their friends. And that's, of course, the best part of middle school, is the social going from class to class. Now the teachers get to zoom the halls. So that's what's happening at the middle school. And before this, we really, the homeroom was just, take attendance, wrap, get yourself organized, and head on out to your next class.
That was very helpful, thank you, because that obviously answers the question. They're looking for that social interaction, so that's awesome. And Mrs. Hayes, you're awesome, too, thank you.
All right. We are receiving, as a Commonwealth, eight hundred fifteen million dollars of stimulus money to come to schools. The Department of Education's working out a formula as to how that's going to be divided up. They're saying that's gonna be tied into a percentage of our Title I money that we received this year. The hope was to have it out by the end of this month. Obviously, when you're getting that kind of money, there's a lot of reporting and a lot of strings attached as to what you can and can't. Courtney's like, yes, a lot of strings attached as to what you can and can't use it for. So that should be coming out shortly, and as soon as we get that information, we will forward it to you. Next, we have FY22 budget. Ms. Keegan and I have been working for the past couple of weeks on the budget. We've met already with everyone on the leadership team to go through line item by line item, what they're proposing. We've accepted some proposals, we've asked to reduce some proposals in order to get us to an acceptable number. I sent something out to Mrs. Charniak and to Mrs. Mulder to get a budget subcommittee together for next week in order for us to be able to start looking at it, and hopefully, we'll be able to get us to the point within the next week and a half, two weeks, where we can start having some more public discussions about the budget and where we stand. But we're still doing some behind-the-scenes work on it to get us to a number where we can present to the entire committee and the community. But the administrative team has been awesome in looking at it and going through it line item by line item. Courtney's done an incredible amount of work on it, too, to get it ready. So we look forward to presenting, get to everyone in a few weeks. Before I turn it over to Mrs. Erkhart for our readings, just wanted to do one other thing that's not on the agenda, that's to give everyone an update on our middle school principal search. I sent something out to middle school staff and to families earlier today. Yesterday, myself, Mrs. Erkhart, Mrs. Hayes, and Mrs. Martenson interviewed six fantastic and wonderful candidates. I was floored by the caliber of the candidates that we interviewed yesterday. They were smart, they were intelligent, they were engaging. I think what really jumped out for the six people were they were all focused on kids and all focused on the importance of making connections and relationships with staff, the community, and students. So any one of them would have been fantastic. I'm meeting with two of the finalists on Monday of next week. I've reached out to both of the individuals. One's coming in at seven thirty to meet with me, the other one's coming in at one o'clock. They are both retired administrators. One's been retired, I believe, for three or four years. The other gentleman's been retired fifteen years. They both have done, one has done some work, he's had three interim positions since he's retired. The other gentleman's had probably close to ten to twelve interim positions since he retired fifteen years ago. I'm excited to meet with them, I'm excited to give them, have them take a tour of the middle school. One of the people we are interviewing as a finalist, I believe, was Mr. Romano's mentor up in Murdoch. And then when Mr. Romano came down to Douglas, this individual became Mr. Romano for a year. Is that accurate? And I got, I got a nice email from a middle school parent who said that one of the finalists was her music teacher back in nineteen eighty-three. So we already, people already have some connections to Douglas. So I'm meeting with those people on Monday and hope to be able to extend an offer to one of them on Tuesday, Wednesday. And my hope is to have someone in place on Monday, February first, at the middle school.
Quick question, how come we're not interviewing for, like, a permanent one? Is it just in term, just because of the timing of everything, is that why? I mean, these look like fine caliber people, I already researched them, and I think they look awesome, so I'm not knocking them, but just curious.
So the two individuals that we interviewed today are retired people, and they, they're very happy with their retirement, so they just want to do, do an interim. We need to be able to go out and do a full search, and you're not gonna get the same caliber of person who is looking to leave mid-year as you are if you said, okay, this is a July one start date. So we're, once I have this finalized, we're gonna go out and we're gonna do a full search in, we're gonna do a full search in two weeks to do something. And then the hope is to have that person, whenever they're appointed, be able to spend some time with the current interim person and have that transition. So when they start in July one, they've already spent a couple, they've already had multiple meetings with the interim and able to have that discussion so they can hit the ground running come July one.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions before I turn it over to Mrs. Erkhart? All right. All you, Neely.
All right. So, good evening, everybody. So tonight, what we are supposed to do is review the restraint policy as well as the updated Title IX policy. Before we do that, I just want to tell you a little bit about what went on today. And there's a little bit of an adjustment according to what went on today. So what Paul, Josh, and Laura and I did was we were interviewed by the Department of Education for the tiered focus monitoring, which in essence is a mid-cycle review in the audit for special education and civil rights. We do not have a final report as of yet, but I can unofficially tell you that we are faring very well in it. So I will leave that at that. But what did come out of it was a little concern around our restraint policy. Not, and I want to make this very clear, not our practice. They feel that our practice is where it needs to be. They feel that, that we are doing what we need to be doing in the way of restraint, when restraint needs to occur. We're doing what we need to do in the way of trainings for, you know, for staff and administrators that participate in that, and all of that. But their concern, as they put it, is the quote-unquote paper. So basically, you know, what, what we actually have down as that proposed policy. So what I did was, I had one informal conversation with our attorney, Michael Joyce, and then I gave him a call and had a little more of a formal conversation about the restraint policy, because this is something that we, that we worked on together. And I, you know, I think, I think due to some of the changes within our world, that there, there's much more of a focus, as there should be, on race and anti-bias and equality and all of those things. And although we're talking about restraint, all of those things do play a very, very big part in that. So what I am gonna ask the school committee to do, if we could, and I'm sorry to tweak the agenda. If we could hold on the restraint, on the restraint policy, I would like a couple additional weeks to work with the attorney on that and add more elements and talk a little bit more about the programs that we have to assist kids that, that correlate with that policy. So could we hold on that one? Are you comfortable with that? And do you have any questions? And, you know, was I clear on, on the why? All right, awesome. You know, I will tell you that it is something, you know, full disclosure, it is something that we probably will have to improve upon. And again, I don't think that's because of anything that the Douglas Public Schools did or didn't do. I think it's because of the changes, the changes within the United States at this time. So we definitely want to be, we want to be aligned with those changes, and we want to make sure that we're doing what we need to for kids. So that's that one. As far as the Title IX, which comes down to that sexual harassment piece, I gave, I gave an overview of that a couple of weeks ago, and then I had Lauren Tippett provide you with the proposed policies. So I guess, I guess at this point, I don't know if you had a chance to review them. I don't know if you have questions. How would you like to go about this?
I read them. Anyone else? Do you want to wait on both? Do them together?
Mr. Erkhart, you need the Title IX policy approved quickly, or do you want to do the two of them together? Or does it not matter for?
It does not matter. You know, I will tell you this. August sixteenth, twenty twenty, the Title IX policy, or the Title IX law, excuse me, updated law, did go into effect. I think the sooner that we could have it approved, the better. I can review, you know, and the Title IX really has nothing to do with the restraint piece, so we could do that separately. What it comes down to, I'm just gonna jump on this for one second. What it really comes, comes down to with the Title IX, and I talked about this a couple of weeks ago, is that, this is what you're gonna find is new. The, the new regulations were finalized on May sixth, and then these regulations went into effect in August twenty twenty. And the regulations imposed an extremely prescriptive grievance process that created much more detail and resource-intensive investigative process. So basically, it was always this idea of, you know, if there was a Title IX grievance or an issue with sexual harassment, it would come to my attention, I would do an investigation, I would do interviews and this and that. And it was always, as the Title IX director, it was always something that I would handle. What they changed is that, that What they changed is that that single investigator model was eliminated. So now it's multiple personnel. So what we would do if something did come forward to me, you know, I would basically create a team. And, you know, I mean, the biggest thing with us doing this is basically to make sure that, approving it and doing the readings, is to make sure that we have something in place that's updated in the event that somebody came forward soon, you know, and with something like this. So I do think that it is something we should review if possible, or just do, you know, maybe the first review of it, just to get the ball rolling on it.
Yeah, I read it as well. I don't know if the rest of the school committee members had a chance to or not. I don't particularly have any questions, I think you've described it pretty well.
Yeah, I read it too. I, I mean, it seems pretty straightforward to me, and I think you just highlighted with the differences. I am a little curious, do they give any guidance in terms of, for example, if the Title IX coordinator will, one, promptly and confidentially contact the complainant to discuss the availability of supportive measures? Is there guidance, for example, to you as to what those supportive measures can be? Okay, all right.
Basically, what they do, they provide us with, it's almost like a disciplinary checklist that the principals might have from the attorney, you know, with layers of different things that go with suspension hearings and, you know, expulsions and things like that, same concept. So basically, what I'm provided with is a set of guidelines, you know, in order to complete a thorough investigation, but also a compliant investigation and a fair investigation.
Okay. Yeah, no, I didn't see anything of concern to me, it seems pretty straightforward.
So what do you need from us?
What do I need from you?
So for people who are watching, who may not have seen our second, third reading on policy, all policy in order to be implemented needs three readings at the school committee meeting. Doesn't mean that you read through all 17 pages, word for word, at the meeting. What it means is that we are able to have this discussion and this dialogue three different times at the school committee meeting pertaining to the policy so that everyone in the community has the ability to come in and speak to it before it becomes policy. So this would count as the first reading, and we have the discussions around it. And then next week, our next school committee meeting, we'd have our second reading, where more questions can be asked, more comments can be made, adjustments can be tweaked if need be. And then at our final one, I believe it would be on February 17th, that would be our final reading. And that would be where we'd finally be put into policy.
All right, any other questions?
Any other questions? So reading one is complete?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will, next school committee meeting, when we do our second reading, I will update you on my progress with the attorney with that restraint piece.
Okay, perfect.
And one thing we need to do when we get to the end, which I just noticed, is February 17th, the school vacation week. So we'll have to, when we get to that part of the agenda, we'll have to look at the 17. It just hit me now when I saw it. That's all I have.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Moving on, we're moving on to the school committee and subcommittee report accounts payable.
Hey, so I signed warrant 28, School 21, dated January 7th, 2021, which was nine batches totaling $32,265.23. And I also signed warrant 28, School Lunch 21, dated January 8th, 2021, which was two batches totaling $1,575.79. Nothing unusual.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda, the 2021-2022 school year preschool tuition rates.
Courtney, do you want to take that real quick, please? Mrs. Keegan, we're going to table that, but you just want to, or we're going to move it actually to your report, correct?
Yes, please, if you can just move it, we can move it down to my report, that's fine.
Then we'll be moving on to the Van Poel Transportation LLC and NRT Bus Incorporated Special Education Homeless Transportation MOAs.
Okay, so this is very similar to the one that we did for Telstone, this is for special education transportation. So Mrs. Urquhart, Ashley, does the, if you go in four pages in, with, you'll see the Office of Student Support Services letterhead. That's actually the typical contract that we have for special ed transportation, okay? So what we did need to do, though, is incorporate language regarding the Chapter 41, Section 56, about services being rendered. Because, again, the legislature did approve an extension for this fiscal year, and the governor signed it on November 10th to do that again for this year. So we did create a memorandum of agreement. Ashley Van Poel had created what they are doing with all of their school districts. Most of the two pages, well, I'd say actually half, I guess. And we asked them to insert numbers, I believe, 7, 8, 9, 10, and 11. And then we added the signature lines. I also did send this over to the town for review as well. So, and I thought it was actually going to make it to the Board of Selectmen's agenda last night, but maybe it just got over there too late. But that's fine, because actually it would be better to have you guys approve it first. And then I don't foresee any problems when it goes over to the Board of Selectmen for their approval and signature as well, so that we can get them paid. So as far as this particular one, it is, they do have a very small fee in there, $5.25 per day for them to provide PPE and van cleaning services. And also, it is a rate of 78% of the contracted price, you know, for those days.
Anybody have any questions? If not, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Douglas Public Schools and the Van Poel Transportation LLC and NRT Bus Incorporated. Motion made by Becky?
Second.
Second by Kelly. Roll call vote.
Becky Charniak, aye.
Kelly Grady, aye.
Julie Mulder, aye.
Heather Moore, aye.
Lisa Brown, aye.
Okay, thank you very much. So I just want to let you know, so this is what we have thus far. Because as you know, you know, things could change throughout the years. If anything new, I wouldn't foresee any problem, I would think it'd be the same. Then we'd just have to bring it to the school committee, bring it to the Board of Selectmen. It's my understanding as well that they did, I guess there was a question as to who could sign on the town side, I believe, with the Telstone. So I guess they addressed that last night at the Board of Selectmen's meeting. So it was signed and given to the Finance Director Town Accountant. I'll receive an original for myself and for Telstone, I believe, tomorrow. So we can catch up on paying them, you know, the remainder amount that's owed to them. And then hopefully this will be resolved very soon. I don't expect any issues with this either. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll be moving on to the DHS videographer position.
Hi. As Will mentioned earlier in his report, there are no fans at this year's basketball games. And so in order to, since the fans can't come to the games, we've been bringing the games to the fans by broadcasting them on YouTube. And, but in order to do this, we need somebody there at the camera who can hand around the action, troubleshoot the internet connection, make sure that everything is running fine. And we would like to create the position of videographer to allow us to pay this person for doing that.
Anybody have any questions? Are you anticipating this being a student or a staff member, or?
I would prefer this, I think it's a great, because it doesn't really matter in the end. I think it's a great opportunity for students, and we've had a student doing it, Maddie, Maddie Mooney, and she has been doing a phenomenal job, I think. Would you agree, Ms. O'Call?
I would, she's fantastic. And this would probably, this would probably continue for volleyball because volleyball is going to be a fall 2 sport, which is set to kick off February 22nd for practices. So if we keep at the same model in District 2 and 3 of no fans, then we'd have to televise the volleyball games as well. So this would probably continue with volleyball as an indoor sport.
Can I just say kudos, thank you for working this out. I know for the community as well as the seniors, juniors, and basically anybody who plays any of these sports, kudos, thank you so much.
No problem.
Mrs. Keegan, is there an issue with a student on the floor?
I'm not sure if there are age things or anything like that, we'd have to look into that tomorrow. I could call the town and ask, I don't believe so, but I want to, you know, double check.
I'm channeling my inner Courtney.
I already, the minute they said that, I thought of that.
Well, we've had students work in the gate before.
Yeah, we just need to make sure that we're in compliance with child labor laws. So, you know. Child labor laws, as I'm learning this year, are actually incredibly lax in Massachusetts as far as kids being able to work the number of hours that they can and that they can work during school hours. It's a little discharging, actually. But I should be a little surprised if there's any concerns there. But, and you know, as we still have said, we'd like to continue this in the Fall 2 season, the strangely named Fall 2 season that will happen in February. But, you know, I think that there's potential to maybe continue the Douglas Sports Network next year, once things are back to normal too. So, I know Ms. Mulder is a fan.
It's such a great opportunity because like, we don't have like a broadcasters group or, you know, stuff like we had when we were growing up as kids. So I think this is awesome for the kids. It's so much fun. Mr. Vega is the best at commentating, and so is, this is so cool. So those have to be part of the package.
Mr. Vega did much better than I do. But I think, you know, what I'd like to eventually be able to do, if we continue this next year, is maybe have students do.
Yes.
Play, it can be a lot of fun.
Is this something that the TV and media class could get involved with? I mean, obviously, we can't pay kids that are doing their schoolwork, you know, you're not going to pay them for something that they're doing for their class. But it just seems, seems like if we have that class available, if that's something that they could look into. Maybe that's a next year thing.
Yeah, I think it would be a next year thing because they do, they do the filming for all of our concerts and plays and things like that. So, you know, this is in their wheelhouse, so to speak.
Yes.
So yeah, it is something that could be conceivably part of their, you know, you could discuss with Mr. D'Encore, but I think it is a good opportunity for the kids.
Okay, but for this year, this seems to make sense. Anyone else? Not, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the creation of a videographer pay position for $20 per game. So moved. Motion made by Kelly. Second by Heather, roll call vote.
Becky Charniak, aye.
Kelly Grady, aye.
Julie Mulder, aye.
Heather Moore, aye.
Lisa Brown, aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the school business and operations manager's report.
Hey, I do have a few things for you this evening, I'm getting caught up. So I will start with the preschool. So in your packet, you were provided with preschool comparisons for this school year from all the area school districts. And if you look at that, there are some variations. And, you know, it occurred when Cindy and Paul and I were meeting and discussing it, you know, you can understand why there would be variations. Demographics are different in various communities, funding sources are different. Some, like one town in particular here, I know that they get a lot more state funding maybe than others as well, you know, things of that nature. So it's good to have this information, definitely part of the review. But I can see why there would be some variations. So we did have a meeting today, we did have a very good discussion. And we are going to be looking, having another meeting next week to review it even further, to make a recommendation to the school committee. It has been five years since we have increased the rates. As you're aware, the preschool program is funded by three funding sources. The revolving fund, which is made up of fees, we have one small grant which hovers around $9,000, $10,000. And then the rest has to go in the general fund. But again, we have not raised the fees and the tuition fees in five years. That being said, all of the costs, particularly staff, does increase every year. So we will be reviewing it. You know, we want to strike a balance, you know, we obviously want to continue to pay our staff and the cost of the program. And we want to mitigate the hit to the general fund to the extent possible, but we also want to be mindful of the parents and the situation that exists particularly now. So we just wanted to provide a little bit of information to you on that. On the second page that was provided to you, and actually, we did have to update that. So we'll incorporate that information when we bring something forward to you. We're thinking probably in February, we'd like to make a recommendation to you. Just have a little bit more work to do on it, but we did want to at least have a preliminary discussion, let you know we were looking at it, and then we can bring something more concrete to you in February. Does anybody have any questions? Okay. So that's that piece, and we'll be discussing preschool a little bit more in a few minutes. So next I have for you transfers and reclasses. We can do the budgetary transfers, number three, first. These were just some additional transfers that after Jean posted the last ones, I had some more that I needed to do. Luckily, it's not like a page and a half, it's just a few. Nothing too earth shattering. I didn't know if anybody had any questions with regard to those. And this budgetary transfers, number three.
Nobody has any questions, I'll be looking for a motion.
I make a motion to approve the FY21 budgetary transfer, number three, dated January 20, 2021.
Motion made by Heather?
Second.
Second by Kelly, roll call vote.
Becky Charniak, aye.
Kelly Grady, aye.
Julie Mulder, aye.
Heather Moore, aye.
Lisa Brown, aye, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. The next thing I have for you this evening is, I hope I've got the right number, but says, oh, reclassifications, number five, but this is the final amount for the FY2021 CDRF reopening grant. So what happened was I brought you a whole lot of reclassifications for that grant a few weeks back. One of the ones that we were putting in the grant is a Verizon, I believe it's one of the Hot Spots invoice. And for some reason, Verizon is having some difficulty invoicing people. They don't even know if and when they're going to be able to do the second invoice. So I wanted to close out this grant. So basically, when and if they ever invoice us, we'll pay it out of the general fund. So I needed to do a few more reclasses for that $90.03. And so I am reclassing some more food to the reopening grant. And that'll close that grant out and it'll be ready for reporting. And even though they did extend it, but by the time they, you know, they finally made the decision to extend it, it was already too late because they made it like a day before. You were supposed to have it spent anyway, so, you know. But we're all set, and then we're doing the reporting, will need to be done by March 5th, and we'll just be fine with this particular grant. Any questions for this?
Looking for a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the FY21 reclassification, number five, dated on January 20, 2021.
Motion made by Heather?
Second.
Second by Kelly, roll call votes.
Julie Mulder, aye.
Kelly Grady, aye.
Heather Moore, aye.
Lisa Brown, aye, thank you.
Sorry, Becky.
Hey, thank you. And the last one I have is reclassifications, number seven. So I am not sure about the number, but anyway, I have the date of the meeting here, so I'm off there. And this is moving, so if you recall, there were several months when we didn't have a real budget yet. there were several months when we didn't have a, a real budget yet. We had a 112 budget, so kind of made a mess of the general ledger. So there were a couple of bills that mistakenly were, um, charged either to the general fund instead of, instead of school choice or the other way around, um, because they didn't have a budget yet, so. Um, not too bad, it was only $85.91 of that, so that wasn't too bad. So I'm just, just addressing that issue as well. It's been a fun year.
If there are no questions, I'll be looking for a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the FY 21 reclassification number seven dated January 20, 2021.
Motion made by Heather.
Second.
Second by Kelly. Roll call vote.
Becky Charnia, aye.
Kelly Grady, aye.
Julie Mulder, aye.
Heather Moore, an eye.
Lisa Brown, an eye. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all. Next, moving on to finally the FY 2021 general fund, um, budget report. And, um, we are, if you go right to the very end, the good news is that at this juncture of our school year, um, looking at the bottom line, because I always have to minus out the transportation, that's a, it's just a minus thing. Um, so we have left as far as unencumbered, you know, 1,700, $715,950.14. Um, all salaries, which is 84% of our budget, is encumbered. Um, so actually we're looking, uh, very well there. Um, also want to call to your attention that at this time, with, with regard to transportation, we have unencumbered over $306,000. Now that could change, of course, with special education, but at least we're in very good stead there. One very important thing I want to call to your attention, and it's kind of, um, is going to coincide with my reporting and my, my, um, trend analysis on the school lunch program. So if you could please look at page five on the general fund report. And you'll see there at the bottom under food service, we have a, a negative, um, balance of over 157,000. So when I go over, so when I sent to you, this is such a strange year, nothing is normal. But when I sent to you the school lunch, um, history and, and trend report, you'll see there that I have in, in capture, captured on that sheet all of the expenditures expected to run that program for the entire year, including all salaries. Um, but that being said, because of this year, and I've never had to do this before, and hopefully never will again, I wanted to make sure that I captured and encumbered here, because you cannot encumber where you don't have any revenue. And at the time, we didn't have any, any, any revenue coming in at the, at the very beginning. So I did decide to encumber all of the salaries in the general fund right now, okay? That does not mean that that will be at the end of the year in the general fund. I'm just, um, accounting for it somewhere. The good news is, and maybe this is a good time to actually, if you don't mind, I will pick up going over with you, um, the school lunch, because I think it'll be good, you know, while we're looking at this to, to go over that. So I had sent to you the school lunch financial historical trend. And if you look at the FY 2021 projection, I am being, you know how I usually use the term prudently conservative? I'm being ultra conservative on the revenues, okay? But that being said, I actually have good news. Um, it took a while for, you know, things were a little bit late, you know, as far as, um, being able to file and everything's different and new, you know, from DESE coming down to all of the school districts. And so they were a little bit behind, but we do have right through December, um, you know, exactly what our revenues are. So, right now, of course, things could change if schools close and, and open and close and things of that nature. But right now, there's a possibility of increasing that revenue number by, um, another 40,000. But just keep in mind that with regard to school choi, I mean, the, um, student, I mean, the school lunch, I'm sorry, too many things on my mind. Um, we really, really can't predict what's going to happen. Because when you close your schools, we're not serving any students in the schools. And to be honest with you, as far as our remote meals, they are around 84 right now. And every town is different, you know, we advertise remote meals on a regular basis. Everybody is very well aware of, of, of remote meals as far as, um, being able to, to get them if you want them and need them. But we've been very consistent since the beginning of the year. So I am thinking that this is pretty much it as far as the need for remote meals. And, um, you know, but, but that being said, we, when we were talking internally about the school lunch program as far as making it through the end of the year, I'm feeling much better and much more confident, not only about the revenues coming in better than we thought, number one, but number two, I think the main goal that we all have is to get through this year, okay? To put it very simply. And we don't want to cause any more financial grief for the town side as well. So my feelings are, and, and, you know, I, I, I hope we're all in agreement, is that to the extent that we can hold our own as a school district, you know, that's our goal. We don't want to put any more impacts financially on the town side in any way unnecessarily. Um, and I'm feeling much, much better and more confident about making it through this school year. And not just barely by a thread either, I'm, I'm seeing some positive things. The other positive thing with regard to general fund and, and particularly possibly, um, school choice that could have hit us is that, again, those grants were supposed to end as of December 30th. Luckily, they've extended the town side. So I was thinking, oh my goodness, I might have another, a $90,000 hit to our school choice and our general fund to purchase PPE for the remainder of the year. But they have extended the grant on the town side and the town has agreed, because they had over 700,000 left on their side, to continue to pay for the PPE for the school district through the end of the year. So we were very pleased with that. Um, so that took a burden off of us as well. So there's some good news there. You know, there are some, some good news financially. Um, we need to hang on to any little good news we can get this year. So I'm feeling far better about getting through this year right now than I was even, even a month ago. Because I'll tell you, from a month ago, before that, it was, um, a lot, a lot of sleep and things, but I'm feeling far, far better. But, um, so Paul and Lisa Leon, the food service director, and I will be meeting to go over the school lunch program next week and to discuss it at length. As you are aware, we did have a backup plan about going, you know, going down to another satellite if we needed to, but right now, and we have some other backup plans as well, but right now, um, we're feeling, you know, good about things at this point, as far as holding our own, looking at all of our funding sources and not negatively impacting us in, in, in a, in a bad, bad way, you know, going forward prospectively into FY 22. Um, does anyone have any questions? So, I think, you know, the, to the extent we can keep afloat, I think we, that's a very, very good thing. I think we should just be very happy with that. So, so we're looking good. And I'm back to the general fund again. Um, I did send out an email to all of the administrators and asked them to look at their FY 2021 general fund to see what they could give back, give up, not spend. So that also will help mitigate the cost of any, anything with regard to school lunch as well. So there's a lot of things going on as far as looking at all our, you know, uh, funding, um, expenditure, revenue side, expenditure side, to try to mitigate to the best extent possible to get us through this year in a positive way. Any questions on the general fund report? Okay, hey, thank you. Um, okay, the next one was, let's see, we have here. Okay, now I did send, um, I think I went over to you actually this afternoon. I do have the school choice revolving fund in the circuit breaker. Those are our two main revolving funds to offset expenditures for our overall expenditure budget. And, um, for school choice, I'm not seeing any issues at this time. I, I, again, the biggest thing was the PPE. So now that we, we know we don't have to take a huge hit with regard to PPE, I'm, I'm, you know, projecting still a regular, you know, a very, a fairly good balance at the end of the year. Um, we will have discussions, um, in the next coming weeks about, you know, going prospectively with regard to school choice and circuit breaker with regard to FY 22 as well. But school choice is looking well. Um, and, um, I'll be updating you more on school choice as we, we move forward, as far as even more details for you as well, which is a little bit different than I've done in the past, but I think this year it warrants it. Um, with regard to the circuit breaker fund, unfortunately, that has, um, dipped down some more. As you'll see, we did, um, have an additional out of district. Um, that was a very large, um, amount. The only place that could come from was the circuit breaker fund account. Um, we don't know right now if we will qualify for extraordinary relief, and I could not tell you even if we did, how much that would be, but there is a possibility of that. So if we do receive any extraordinary relief circuit breaker funding, it must be spent by, um, FY, you know, by June 30th of this year. And of course, you know, I'll just make that happen with, with, um, actually it'll, I've already put that in here, so I'm sure that'll, that'll take care of itself. So, um, we should be fine with that. And, and if we do get it, that will be good for as far as, um, carryover balance into FY 22. And we will keep you posted on that, certainly as we, as we find out if we will be eligible for it. Um, does anyone have any questions with regard to school choice or circuit breaker? Okay, so the only thing that I have left is, um, the preschool. And, let's see, what we have here. Okay, so I did provide the financial historical trend for preschool as well. And you do see a minus there with regard to revenue covering expenditures, but we, um, at least won't be in the red if you see the very bottom. Now, obviously, it's a big difference from the past. And I will be needing to review this along with looking at our review of, um, possibly increasing the, um, preschool tuition fees as well, because it has been five years. But we are still holding our own, and a part of that is because of the carryover balance. We started off with a very good carryover balance. But if you look at the projected revenues, it is substantially lower than we were expecting to have. And it's only COVID related, because as you know, um, Mrs. Sosha has done a great job at expanding the program. Um, she's come to the school committee a number of times. I really feel that the parents, you know, love the expansion of the program and, and it's, you know, I don't believe there are ever any seats left. Um, so that has been absolutely fantastic. It's only COVID related. And I'm sure that after this is over, we'll get right back to where we, where we were, which will be wonderful for the school district or the revolving fund, you know, but mostly for the students, um, parents as well.
Mrs. Sosha, what are numbers from this year compared to previous years? Just as a point of reference.
It's about half. We're running 30 and we're normally about 60. And we, prior to knowing what was going on in the fall, we were full up. Our four-year-old full day was full. Um, then we made one of our other preschools a Tuesday, Thursday, full day to take more of those kids. And then the Monday, Wednesday, Friday was full, so.
Yeah.
Um, I have no doubt that parents are already calling, they're already looking for next year. We have over 100 in the census from the town of three-year-olds and four-year-olds.
I have sort of a request if, uh, we're considering an increase in the rate, which I don't think is unreasonable with this amount of time without one. Um, but just looking at the, the comp, like the comparatives, I noticed Pucky Cuddle doesn't offer five day, I think it's three and two, but they're pretty similar. And, um, a lot of conversation this year has been about, that I've been a part of, has been about the benefits of private school, because you can kind of pay for places to stay open. So I just would hope that if we are changing the rates, that we are making sure to pair that with a message of exactly what the preschool program offers and the advantages of it. To me, they're, they're plain because my kids have gone through it. Your kids get exposed to the building that they're going to be in, so that makes the transition to kindergarten easier. The curriculum is the same, is like, rate streamlined into kindergarten. Um, they get to build those social connections, so there's not as much of the fear transition. So I think there's a lot that makes, and not to mention the fact that the staff is fantastic. So I think there's a lot that makes it great. But if we start to like creep over what's around us in surrounding areas, I think we need to make sure to be clear about what the advantages are of sticking with Douglas.
Right.
Everybody.
We would definitely spell that out too at, at our virtual open house that we'll be having.
Great.
So as soon as, uh, the rates are set, then we'll be planning our registration in our open house.
Great points. Um, does anyone have any questions with regard to the preschool projections? Any concerns about anything? Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, we can move on to topics not anticipated, and I guess we'll go over the meeting date since it's the last one. So, the 17th is vacation. Would everybody be okay with bumping it to the next week?
I may be remembering incorrectly because I do that a lot, but wasn't February, didn't we usually end up with like one meeting in February?
That might be why, and we put this in there for some reason.
Yeah, I mean, I know, I know it was either February or April, and with everything that goes on in April, I can't believe it's April, that we usually only had one meeting scheduled.
Um, typically, we do have one, only one meeting scheduled for February, April, but, um, that being said, if there are, um, you know, very pressing issues, then we would add that extra meeting.
I think we just didn't know what was going to be happening in February, so we threw it in there.
Yeah, yeah.
We can tentatively put it in for the 24th.
Yeah.
If needed. Yes, yes, no, no.
Yeah.
Good?
Sure.
Okay. All right. With that, we do need executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel as an open meeting. May have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the governmental body. So I will be looking.
Not to return to open session.
Not to return to open session. And I'll be looking for a motion.
I move to enter executive session at 8:27 PM.
Roll call vote up. Motion made.
Second.
By Kelly. Roll call vote.
Becky Charnia, aye.
Kelly Grady, aye.
Julie Mulder, aye.
Heather Moore, an eye.
Lisa Brown, an eye. Thank you, and see everyone on February 3rd.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Send to me for the executive session. People should have it. I emailed it earlier.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.